I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would make the motion to adopt the agenda presented. Second? Motion is made, seconded to adopt the agenda on paper. Under new business, we have two ordinances that we need to do very quickly here. The first one is ordinance number eight seven three, amending the Town of Lakeview Comprehensive Plan, map, and zoning map. As per your request, we have the change.
And I move that the ordinance eight seven three be read by title only.
Second?
Second.
On paper. Vote, motion carries.
And I would make a motion, I think that a vote be taken on ordinance eight seven three and ordinance amending the Town of Lakeview Comprehensive Plan, map, and zoning map.
We made the secondment, on paper. I like it, vote carries. And the second ordinance is number eight seven four. Prince William actually changing the cap here, not the map.
And I move that ordinance number eight seven four be read by title only.
Second? On paper. Motion carries.
I move that a vote be taken on ordinance number eight seven four and ordinance amending the Town of Lakeview Comprehensive Plan, map, and zoning map.
Second? Second, on paper. I like it, vote carries. We will move on to next items, stop signs on North Second and Eighth Street and North Eighth, Second and K Street. Can we have a report?
Um, yes, I got a report on that several times. Right there at K and Second Street, somebody, several people have ran stop signs and almost hit a couple kids that were walking along with right by the Lake County Examiner saying that kids are walking and there is a lot of foot traffic for children there and cars are not paying attention and they are driving entirely too fast.
So there was also not to just make any suggestions on how to address this problem.
Well, I, I agree because I work on the corner of North Second and H and the cars just come through there without any slowdown at all for people who are walking by or in the crosswalks or whatever. You know, they just are going way too fast and I think it could slow the traffic down. I know it's done wonders around the school, having the stop signs.
What do you think, Jeff? Well, this is the first time I've seen it, but I don't even know when you guys talked about it before. I'll make a comment.
Yeah, I just saw it last week for a request.
Yeah. People are gonna hate that naturally. If you know one more second, we're gonna use it like a thoroughfare instead of, you know. People want the stop signs going the other direction a lot. You know, one by the Denver, people go zooming across North Second on that too. I don't really know why, it's a new stop sign, it's real visible. People just come up there and burn right through it. Same with G coming out of North Second, you know, I mean. A couple times a year, at least, somebody goes in front of me, you know, just zooming right through it. Oh my gosh, and it's a big brandy stop sign. So, I don't know, I think on North Second. Stop signs traditionally are not a good fix for speeders. But, you know, it seems to be what we have in our arsenal. It's a law enforcement issue. Got, you know, I think four or five tickets down there in the same area would do the same thing, but.
And we can tough the law.
Well, they're shorthanded also. And I know they're down by the schools a lot trying to keep track of them down there. So, I don't know how they can place those ones.
I haven't seen them a lot down by the schools. And by the way, this week we got our new speed signs in. Twenty mile an hour and twenty-five, so we have all new ones. Around the school as twenty and then a little farther back from there from the school about twenty-five.
Maybe a speed sign on North Second would help.
Sure.
Because there is no speed sign on North Second.
Sure, yeah, I mean, it should go without saying, it's twenty-five in a residential, but. We could certainly put one right there near those two intersections. I have exit now, so we could.
What, just a slowdown sign?
Twenty-five mile an hour.
Twenty-five mile an hour.
Yeah. And we could get something else, you know, congestion, school crossing. What do you think, Scott, on the safe route to school, is there anything available?
That's too far from the school. It's gonna be too far from the school. Most of the safe route to school is usually down a block or two of the schools. But I think if there's a stop sign, put it some point. You're not gonna run it for the first six months. And it does give the police a little bit more body if they're doing that.
Shall we start with one of the two and see what we get, or do you wanna go right? There'll have to be a four-way.
I like the idea of the school crossing signs, which.
Can a school crossing sign be that length line from the school?
I'll actually let you see. If it's not a primary crosswalk, where's, we can just put a pedestrian. What about pedestrian crossing? Though you can't put it, it's probably within a couple blocks of the school, I believe, for.
Can we just put children crossing?
Put a pedestrian crossing.
Pedestrian crossing, yeah. Because at least that's a warning that there might be people in the area walking down the street and so. Well, can you investigate that and get back to us at our next meeting now? And stop signs on those.
Sure, I mean, we can put some, we wanna put speed signs up for now and hold off on either stop sign, or do you wanna go forward with one or the other of the stops?
If we have speed signs, it'd be a good idea to get them up right away.
Yeah, I have speed signs, we can get those up right away. There's so much going on right at the examiner. I almost feel like we would have more confusion with a four-way stop there, but maybe, maybe that's not the case.
Well, it's not confusing to go for a four-way stop. You can stop and who's their first goal? When the next person, when the next person stops.
It shouldn't be confusing to pull up there at the stop sign coming from the south. Realize that you're at the stop sign.
I see most kids walking on H Street to go to school than I do on the other street. Of course, I'm not on K, so I can't say I was K.
Sure, sure.
But I do see from the north end, there's a lot more kids that walk on H Street more than through Street.
Let's put a four-way at H and some speed signs.
Yeah, what do you want to put on each?
We want to put a four-way stop at H.
And it'll slow down a little bit.
You guys have voted on it, in favor of it, but I think I have everything to do and I'm up for it. And we'll put speed signs for both directions.
I'm recommending that you do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a power. Michelle presented by the Town of Lakeview, City District, City of John Day, regarding the establishment of a partnership or consortium for public improvement projects.
It's not a political, you're doing the, yes, thank you. Thanks for letting me do this. And I have on the line, we've got Nick Green, who is the city manager of John Day. And we also have on the line Dan Brown, who is the city manager of Burns. And we appreciate them coming and helping out tonight. So, I'm gonna take the reins here first and kind of walk through what this might look like. So, um, we have been talking to the city managers and I about some of the problems that we each have, they're very similar, and. Um. I don't know why this won't go. Just gonna go to the next screen. Oh, maybe it's just, there we go. So, we've been talking about each of our cities. We are all located on the highway three ninety-five, we're about four hours apart. And each of our cities are facing some of the same problems. We've got, we're all the economic centers of our counties. We're all facing housing issues, we're all facing population. And we need a new innovative way to understand and attack or kind of crack open the code of how we can get those things growing in a self-reliant way. So, we want to create a tri-city agreement through ORIS one ninety to pursue new ways between things along with shared, sharing staff, sharing equipment, and sharing resources across each of our towns. So, it's a better economic model. So, instead of duplicating something three times, we can do it once and share the cost for that. So, the problem with our housing is that there, the need has been, and it has been for quite some time, that all three of our cities lack quality affordable housing. Each of us are adopting the URA. John Day has, we got theirs in motion there a couple years in advance to us. So, they've got data for us to learn from. And this way we can share resources, we can use John Day as our model and just sort of cut and paste it down to Burns and then down to Lakeview. So, in addition to that with our urban renewal area, what I have discovered in town hall is I've been doing a lot of cleaning and organizing and bringing us up to, to compliance and to code. And what I have found is that, um, we have as a town since nineteen eighty paid, not once, not twice, not three times, but four times for a URA. And we've never gone past that, year after year after year. And that's not just with our URA, it's, um, I have, we have a whole full-scale indoor exercise plan that went all the way to engineering and. I mean, I, I've gone through dump truck load after dump truck load after dump truck load of what we're talking about right now. And so, I, it's not new information to present this. What is new is that I feel like we have the team necessary to take it across the finish line instead of having it just set in a pile of other layers. So, we have partnered with a company to bring, and each of our city managers have agreed to commit to a five-year program to bring one hundred houses to each of our cities. So, it will give us a total of three hundred houses. So, one hundred houses goes to John Day, one hundred houses to Burns and one hundred houses to Lakeview. And part of those hundred houses is a 3D printed house. Why we're proposing the 3D printed housing is they're affordable, they are new technology, they cut the cost of purchase price, and they also will allow for affordable housing for veterans so that we can help support our community and get them into these wonderful new homes. It typically takes about thirty-six hours to print one home. So, it's really cost-effective. In addition to it being cost-effective, it takes a crew of, I think, three to get this underway and constructed. So, it takes one person to run a computer and two other people to keep the cement flowing. And there's little to no waste. So, the, on the agenda, we have, as a tri-city, we applied for GLCD grant. We were awarded sixty thousand dollars and with that money, we are going to have four different floor plans created for the 3D houses. So, in order to attract a workforce, we have to build on blocks. And we can't attract more workforce if we don't have a place for them to stay or to live. Right now, I know Collins Pine is wanting to put in a night shift and they can't do it because there's nowhere for anyone to stay.
It's like sixty, sixty people.
They need sixty houses. And our proposal as a tri-city is to bring one hundred houses in five years. I anticipate that we're gonna need, we'll probably have a higher demand simply because we're, we're trying to bring in housing for that workforce. So, we wanna keep it in the sweet spot so that people aren't cost burdened with their mortgage. Typically, in a crossover high five corridor, they're paying about forty percent of their income for mortgages and that's just nuts to be, it's hard to raise a family like that. So, with housing, we'll come education, our life will improve. We're also working with John Day, who has, Nick has already written and installed broadband three times. So, he's kind of aware of the platform of broadband. So, we're gonna lean in on his expertise there. And so, another benefit for Lakeview that is, we want different from Burns and John Day is that we are getting water, clean water. So, combining our housing and our water is really a great companionship to start bringing in those infrastructure blocks because we'll be self-delived. Plus, we're gonna put in our URA there and it's gonna, it's just gonna be a great win and a positive word for, for all, for Lakeview and for Burns and for John Day.
Have you defined URA, what is URA?
Urban Renewal Area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, Grant County is ranked number one and Harney and Lake County are tied for fifth in the most socio-economically distressed counties in Oregon. And we all three are facing the same issues. And I think by combining our towns, we'll have a greater ability to increase our populations when we go into grants. So, instead of having twenty-five hundred people, we can combine our populations with John Day and Burns and it'd end up with six thousand, six thousand five hundred fewer less, which puts us in a bump up level for being able to apply for grants. And it also allows us to say that we're regionally working together. So, we're three counties working together to bring in better quality of life, housing, jobs, which is really great for Grant County. So, what's challenging right now is lack of economic opportunity, brain drain. So, when the timber industry left, it left all the CEOs and the larger management with their higher education left. And we have been here trying to put it back together. We do work from an aging population that all of our towns need to take into consideration and basic industries of the U.S.A.R., so. What we're preparing to do is we want to go into how we can improve our resources and save money and eliminate the layers that come with government. I know that's a shocker because it's so simple when you come to do something. But we're trying to streamline it. So, if I could say it as easily as possible, what I, what we're trying to do is put into the tri-cities, like a portfolio of management, like a venture capital, where we're managing assets, we're managing money, and we're trying to streamline processes. And I know that after I get done, I'll have Nick talk about what we'll do before anything even enters into the ground to try to get everything on the same page and hit markers. So, we're wanting just to improve everything. We don't want to, we don't wanna take away from any of our towns uniqueness. I don't, it's not our intention, it's not my intention to change Lakeview at all because it's beautiful, it's unique, and it has its own little personality. All I, all we wanna do is, um, improve it. Bring our downtown buildings up to code and fill up with businesses. We wanna engage the community in how that looks and how we wanna do that and what's important to them. I know I've heard over and over and over, we need to bring a new grocery store here. For a long time, we have needed to bring that. We needed to bring in businesses that will make sense here and to help those that are already here. So, we're gonna try to stabilize our budgets. We're gonna create a new housing stock. We're gonna help creation of new jobs and bring in jobs that are stalled because there's no place for them to stay. So, Nick, I'm gonna let you describe, describe this middle mile network for the state of Oregon and kind of example of what the tri-cities could do when we work together.
Sure, thank you, Michelle. Great presentation, wonderful to see everybody. I just wanna give you a little bit of context and I really, you probably can't see it in the map in your packet so you can look at it later, but we've been working at the state level to create middle mile fiber, which has been historically the toughest not to crack because you've got long terrain, a lot of elevation changes, and not a lot of people deserve. So, unless you have a reason to build from point A to point B, historically it's been really challenging to get funding. We started working in John Day on this problem in twenty eighteen and using public-private partnerships as our approach and using intergovernmental agreements like the ones that we're describing for housing. We've been able to raise ten million dollars for broadband expansion within Grant County, including fiber in the home for every premise within the city limits of John Day. So, that's clear up to the northwest side area of the county, Long Creek and Monument, all the way to the spray and then south to Seneca. And as I've been working with the state, the Oregon Broadband Advisory Council, and the new broadband office, there's already planned in the works for a Lakeview to Burns run that would be done by a wholesaler, I mean, someone who's focused on transport, not necessarily on servicing the communities along the path. But we think we have an opportunity to pair some federal funding through USDA Reconnect and that solicitation is just about to hit the street. We've won Reconnect previously in Grant County. We raised six million dollars to that program in twenty nineteen. And we think we have an opportunity to connect all three cities on one fiber network, including local distribution. So, the idea, as Michelle indicated, crack open the market a little bit, get the right amount of competition, but keep incentives aligned so that businesses don't feel like they're being pushed out or priced out by a larger provider. Often the case, the smaller providers are a little more agile and a little more aggressive on pricing. So, we're trying to right-size them for each market, but recognizing, as she showed in that Maslow's hierarchy, broadband is critical, is critical infrastructure for the twenty-first century. If we wanna remain relevant as rural frontier community, we have to be far more sophisticated in our approach and we've gotta learn the hunt of the pack. And so, I think this agreement is gonna really help us operationalize that. We're excited with a chance to explore working with you on this type of project. And I don't wanna steal any future thunder, but I will say we're looking at the same thing for meat processing. Trying to keep more value in southern and southeastern Oregon rather than exporting it. So, we're looking at that as a regional initiative as well to help shore up our ranchers and our small farms, give them opportunity to compete on a level playing field and keep more jobs and more economic growth value in the state. So, pretty good thing to come, but we're pretty excited.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, that's all, that's, that's what I have, so, yes, questions.
Yeah, I'd like to pause after each section so people can ask questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, in terms of the.
Please say your name.
Okay, sorry. This is Ginger Castwell, I'm the executive director of the Lakeview Community Partnership. So, in regard to broadband, will the run between Lakeview and Burns assist in our community getting, being able to be fully connected so that we, you know, when we go down, that we get back up? You know, is redundancy, is this gonna provide redundancy? Because that's really probably one of our biggest issues.
Did you have a question, Nick?
Yeah, it's a great question. So, for the consortium, we're gonna deal in capital stacks, meaning we're gonna pool investment capital from multiple federal partners, state partners, and local partners. In the case of resiliency, the answer to your question is absolutely. We'll have redundant pathways through these pipes, these long-distance middle mile pipes, so that if you lose connectivity from one end, it can be fed from the other. We're also looking at more resiliency in local distribution network so that you have a local issue that takes, similar to a power grid, you get a localized issue, that doesn't take out everyone within the community. It's isolated to a specific zone that can then come in and be repaired. So, a great example in John Day, we had a guy driving a utility truck with his ladder extended and didn't know it. He ripped out a bike line. That was a localized event that caused an outage for about three blocks rather than to the entire city. So, we look at those types of things and these new programs, and part of this is us lobbying, we push really hard on USDA. They're now eligible for, there's a presence for local government and for cooperative agreements between governments. Any areas with less than a hundred meg service are eligible, which is probably all, all of our cities with the exception of John Day now. And we can pair these grant programs across federal agencies. So, USDA could be working with EDA as well as state investment and local investment to extend broadband, not just to, to the residents within the incorporated city limits, but also in urban growth areas and in the outline communities as well as the farms and ranches.
Did that answer your question? Should you, anybody else?
I should warn you, I should warn you in the bathroom, it's long after.
He does. Is there any other questions? Yeah.
Kevin Winter, Lake County Examiner. So, this sounds like it's more for like, you know, our local internet service providers to connect into a redundant system. I mean, I know some companies are just using Lake County as a way to build a industrial fiber I mean, I know some companies are just using Lake County as a way to build a industrial fiber to other communities and not really allowing us to connect. But this sounds more like it's really for local ISPs to either offer hot faster fiber or a redundant service just in case something happens. Is that my understanding on that?
I would say you're spot on with the today problem set. The challenge when you're talking about technical innovation and entrepreneurship, think back 20 years ago. 20 years ago, we had fiber, but we weren't all walking around with computers in our pockets. And now I've got two, one for work and one for home. So fast forward 20 years, what is it that the next generation will create that will need broadband capacity? I wouldn't even begin to guess. You know, I wouldn't have projected 20 years ago that we would have iPhone 13 with all the capabilities that those have or these Android devices. So the idea is we know we're going to need connectivity. We know that we need it to be redundant and resilient. A big wave through this decade has been data warehousing. We have ideal climates for that, but in the future, it might be controlled environment agriculture where Lake County becomes a breadbasket. You know, your arable land ain't great, let's be honest. But for highly efficient water systems, you have a phenomenal growing climate. So could you have tell workers and remotely operating hydroponic systems that's a hectare scale that are distributing hydroponic produce? We don't exactly know what the high-growth industry in the future will be, but we know they're going to need connectivity. And if we position today, we can more successfully go after those opportunities down the road.
So one of the things that I've been working on for Lakeview is a greenhouse. And I'm keeping statistics and information and research developed so that I can go for a grant to build a greenhouse here to hopefully get up and going and operate, the town will operate it for the first two years and get it to a place where we can scale it. Because there's definitely a need for that. John Day's had their greenhouse up and going, so we're going to mimic some of their hydroponic how they've set that up and fed their crops. But I'm looking to have a larger greenhouse here in Lakeview and to plug it into our geothermal to help cut the costs one percent since it is kind of costly. But with a geothermal, we won't need to worry about that. So I'm planning on having that greenhouse completely paid for operations and all of that through a grant. So there's an opportunity for us to grow that. And Nick, you guys have had a nice feedback about your greenhouses, right? That's your question?
Yeah, I say that's a loaded question. People initially, they were kind of uncomfortable with the idea of government investing in food production. Of course, we did that at federal level and have for over a century by subsidizing farmers. But in this case, we directly invested in the market because we were paying elastic pricing for stuff that sat on trucks for three weeks. And nobody really liked it. And we recommended we were in a desert. And so could we get could we become more self-reliant by leaning into this and finding an operating model that works for us? We've operated ours for about two and a half years now, and we produce 10 tons of leafy greens and vine crops annually. We're scaling that to 25 tons within a footprint that's the size of about two homes, two large homes. And we're at 6,000 square feet today, we can grow to 10,000 square feet. So on about a quarter of an acre, you can produce enough food to feed about a third of your city. Pretty phenomenal scale. So I think, you know, it's an example of an initiative. It's not going to be right for everyone, but it has worked well for us. And the idea behind the Tri-Cities is that we syndicate the risk. So Lakeview learns from what John Day does, John Day learns from what Burns does. So we move forward together, no partner gets overextended. And we can try some things that we couldn't do on our own. Collectively, we have the purchasing power of the city decided matters. So can we leverage that for our local initiatives without giving up our political autonomy? And I think that's the exciting part. I think we have the opportunity to do that. We're going first, we're not aware of anything quite like this, so we need to ease into it a bit. But I think it has tremendous potential.
I do too. Be fair to all. Comment? Yes.
I have a question back to the housing.
Would you please give us a name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Mike McGowan for Free Fire Not View. And can I go back to the housing proposal or the housing project?
Of course you can.
Okay, so I love the idea that Lakeview could be involved with Burns and John Day in an innovative, low-cost, environmentally friendly housing project. I think that's a I think that's a great ambition, and I think we should definitely do it. But I am also very concerned about the workload and the human resources available in Lakeview. And I don't consider the housing project to be the first priority. I think everybody who lives here would consider the first priority to be fixing our water. And, you know, you made good progress on that. We have grant money available. But I'm concerned that, you know, we're going to lose track, lose focus, and lose priority on the water project if we take on new housing and new greenhouses and Tri-City collaborative ventures. You only have so many hours in the day. You have very few public employees in town. We're losing our public works director in a period of time. We'll need to replace that person with a new person who will have a learning curve. We're losing our town engineer, or at least the contract comes to an end at the end of this year, right? So you're having some loss of key personnel, and you're taking on more projects or starting to take on more projects. I'm very worried, Michelle, that we're not going to have water. And the water is required in order for this housing to work anyway because you can't have new gray houses in town if the water that comes out of the tap is brown.
I agree with you.
Could Scott speak to the water issue a little bit?
Where we are with the water is the RFPs gone up for engineering already. We should have that back by the end of November. We'll have an engineer, we'll decide on engineering by December. It'll go into engineering for plans and drawings by the end of the first year. We should have that back for the six months. Funding is already there. Hopefully start on it by mid to late next year. And if not, we'll start off this year.
Mid to late next year?
2022 year.
Right, so
We're at the end of 2021 now.
Sure.
So by the time we get
That's June or July we're going to
That's what we're shooting for.
Break ground, yeah.
And then it's a 12 to 18 month build out?
At least 18 months.
18 months. So we're talking about three years, right?
More or less.
Before we have new water. But, you know, I think the proposal for the housing says, you know, we're going to get going in a period of less than a year, right? At least in John Day where the pilot program is. So how do you how do you focus on the housing when you don't have the good water? Wouldn't it make more sense for the town to focus on water and not just the part that Scott's working on, but an interim plan that maybe puts, you know, small-scale filtration in house by house or neighborhood by neighborhood so that we have clean water, clean and usable water in the interim before Scott's project is done and we have plenty of water available? And in the meantime, also work on the hookups from all of the main lines that go down the streets to the houses because we all know that we're not going to get clean water if those pipes are bad. So we have lots of work to do in the program.
But there is a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
We are going to have the grants for the watering replacement, hookup replacement. But that's going to have to go
As we should, but it requires people, it requires communication, it requires neighborhood outreach, it requires more meetings for people to come in and understand what the program is.
Right.
And if we're doing that at the same time that we're involved in several, maybe many of these innovative Tri-City programs, I think you guys are all going to burn out. And I worry that none of these projects will get done if we don't prioritize and focus on them in order of priority. I'd love to see the town council commit to water as our number one priority in this town. And I think every voter here would support you.
We've already done that.
So
We've already committed to that.
So does this take away from that?
No. With the Tri-Cities, that brings in John Day and Burns to help us with what we need to do to report with this.
With water?
Yes.
There with everything, the whole program, the housing, the water.
Okay, so let's talk about that. How do Burns and John Day help us get our water program perfect in the shortest possible
They help us with writing grants through the Tri-Cities program. They help us with labor. We can borrow labor from John Day and from Burns to help us with public works issues. Most of the projects that we're going to do for our water cannot be done by public works because they're going to be over $10,000. So it's going to be private contractors that come in to handle these projects. Public Works is going to continue doing what they're doing at a higher scale. And we're probably going to have to bring in more public works people as progress. Obviously, they're not going to be able to run the water. So we're going to probably have to hire a couple more people as that plan comes along. And that's as we grow and funding grows, that's what we're going to be doing. But your watering projects, new hookups, that's all over $10,000. Public Works can't do it. It's got to be done by private contractor. So that's why we have to continue to have to be grants to be able to improve our water system.
Right, but even if you get the grant money, hopefully you do, you still have to have somebody to administer the grant money, to review the contractor, to HPR fees, and to review the contracts, to work with legal counsel, to do all the accounting. I mean, it's a lot of work. Is that work going to be done in Burns or in John Day?
With their help, yes. It's not going to be done necessarily in their town. But with their help, with their legal team, our legal team will move forward that way. We have the power of three towns, not this Lakeview, either the Tri-Cities or you.
They all three need new pipes. They all three need new systems. So if we work together and have one piece of equipment to travel from John Day, then to Burns, and then to Lakeview, or vice versa, each town is going to have that machinery, and we all went in with it, sorry.
Say we bought an asphalt machine, okay, and it was $200,000. Well, we split it three ways, and we use it for a couple of months, pay the whole bunch of streets here, but we can do that locally, right?
We can, but we're getting off of what his question was.
Yeah, I'm talking about priorities.
Priorities and priorities.
I think these are all great ideas. I'm concerned that we're going to choke to death on good ideas. And I think that everybody in town really wants water to be focused, priorities above housing and greenhouses and other projects.
By the time the grants are actually issued, I mean, once you apply for a grant, it takes up to a year to get funded.
No, I understand.
So by the time that the grant money starts coming in for all this, it should be just about finished up with water.
But in the meantime, Scott, doesn't it make sense for public works and with the help of John Day and Burns to come up with interim solutions that will filter water on a short-term and a micro-scale basis so that people can not ruin their clothes and can have proper showers and can, you know, eat and drink?
We're talking eighteen to twenty-four months. By the time you find funding for that and get that off the ground, we'll be done with the water.
But that's eighteen or twenty-four months. I know everybody wants
Right, you've got to have funding to go buy those filters, but we don't have that. You can't take the funding from what you're going to build your water filtration system with and go buy microsystems for each individual home. That's not the way the grant works.
Well, then, I'm not talking about the $15 million grant. I'm talking about using the Tri-City resources in order to find other money for temporary
Right, but I'm saying by the time you find that money and you get the grant, it's written, it's awarded, and you actually go out and buy those systems and get them installed, we will just about be done with that plant. Because it's a year from the time they awarded grant, by the time you actually see money, it's anywhere from eight months to a year.
Well, my own view, let's don't give up on an interim solution because you think that the grants, maybe there's a private public partnership like Nick talked about that can help us with our interim problems so that people in the town see that the that the town has a focus on water and that there are solutions available. Maybe you don't fund the whole filter, but you say, look, you know, you pay half, town will pay fine money to pay half. Or we'll, you know, work with a manufacturer of these systems and give them, you know, good publicity. There's a lot of ways to solve problems.
Definitely. We're looking at every option we can for water because, as we all know, this is a disaster.
How will that work for those that still have cast iron pipes? Those filtration systems will do nothing for them.
Yeah.
And there's nothing we can do to
Well, I don't know if that's true. I don't know if that's true. I mean, maybe that's true, maybe it's not.
It doesn't work.
Well, you'll see when this filtration system moves in. If you live in an older house, it still has the galvanized pipe in it, you may still have groundwater, maybe.
So
Very likely because it's rust from the pipe. And I don't care how clean the water is, once it hits your house or passes that meter, if you have cast iron or stainless, not stainless, but
Duct iron, yeah.
Galvanized between your meter and your house, that's a 50-year-old piece of pipe. You've got rust in the pipe. You're still going to have decannists, you're still going to deal with some sort of groundwater because it's from the rust in the pipe, and that's on the homeowner, it's not on the town. And these houses that you see, this water that you see these people are putting on Facebook, you got to consider where that water's going through before it actually comes out of their town. What do they have in their house? Is it galvanized pipe that's rusting? You know, I'm on one of the worst watering mains in town, and my water don't get that brown. But my house is going to be brown.
Okay, so Nick has a comment.
Yes.
Hey, I apologize to everybody who's going up for our six o'clock meeting, but I this is Mayor Bob Bob, Mayor John Day. I love the conversation because we have the same exact one. If, you know, the priority before I got here was a fire hall, and then it became a wastewater treatment plant. And the difficult answer is you're both right. So you do need to have some hierarchy to the approach. But we faced this in my former career working for the Defense Department. How do you fight a multi-front war where your typical acquisition cycle to build a new piece of equipment to the military is 10 years? And they're telling you they have an urgent operational need for something today. So we ended up adapting the approach for building equipment to warfighters in Afghanistan and Iraq to go from a 10-year cycle to about 10 months. And over that, you know, within my portfolio, I manage 110 systems called Quick Reaction Capabilities that were valued at $31 billion. I took that approach to John Day and I said, look, we do have to have programs, but we can also manage these projects as a portfolio. We just have to get a lot more sophisticated in how we use contracts, how we leverage private consultants, how we build these capital stacks, and how we work with other public agencies. And so I will just tell you, within our community, we went from having a goal list of projects one through N, and one was build a fire hall, and two through N never happened because it took 10 years, to having a project portfolio with about 15 active capital improvement projects, 31 grants under management currently with a total value of $24 million, plus another $7 million in fund. And we've applied for an additional $20 million in grants that will be cited in the next three months. I will just tell you, there's a way to do it. It does require you to think and act differently. So this ain't your granddad's government. We're operating at a higher level. We're we you have to manage your local risk, you have to determine your own priorities. But I will say, using this approach, I think we can create a central clearinghouse to move contracts. Just as a quick forensics, we do one contract with an architect that provides housing in this example for a flat side, float side, one- and two-story, detached and detached for all three cities. And then that package, predeveloped package, can be tailored to a specific site and a specific development and cut three months out of the design lifecycle. It's just a quick example. We currently in John Day have five street improvement projects under construction, a $12 million wastewater treatment plant in final design, ready to go into construction, and six street improvement projects budgeted and funded for next year. During that five-year period, where we raised all that capital, we reduced our staff from 24 public employees down to 16. So we might end up, jury's still out on that, but I will say it's working so far. And I think having the collaborative with the other three cities, we could find the strategic balance that would allow us to do this. But recognizing also that your, you know, my comments are totally legitimate. There needs to be some prioritization, and I think that's something that we could work through. And I think that's something that we could work through. The initial request here is just a point of, of board member to work with the city manager. Let's develop this, put a little more meat on the bone and bring it back to you for further discussion.
Are either, I mean, Lakeview has a number one priority of water. Does Burns or John Day also have a number one priority of water?
Water?
Water. Water quality.
Our, ours is wastewater and John Day. I don't know what Burns is looking at.
Oh, hi everybody. I'm, I'm, I'm the quiet guy for once. Um, I, uh, first, first off, it's, it's, it's nice to, to be with you virtually. Um, but I, the, the number one issue in, in Burns is not water. However, we did just finish a lot master plan and we are looking at about eighty-five million dollars in, in repairing some water distribution, really. It's, it's not the stress, but it just certainly needs work because the age of our, our mess thing of a sewer. And, and I guess, and I don't wanna belabor what's already been said, uh, why, you know, people ask why and, and forgive me, I don't talk as fancy as Nick. You know, I mean, Nick's, Nick's definitely the guy that has the experience in doing this, uh, and which is why, which is why we like him. Uh, I spent twenty-eight years wearing a uniform between working for a beat-up hat before I became city manager down there. Right, and so I'll break it down real simple. Why? There's strength in arms. There's tanks, right? Government is absolutely horrible. It has been for years in working through the processes local, right? We just simply can't afford, Lakeview can't afford to do water, sewer, streets, all of this on its own, try bringing, oh, John Day couldn't do it. Burns can't do it, right? Sometimes you need help. Then you have to have number one goals, you have to have plans. We had a strategic planning process to start with. Our new council started in January, out of the box thinking. The number one thing that we have is plant. When you come to Burns, it's like, wow, man, it's, it's nice, it's potential, but there's some lighting areas there. And so we worked together, what, what do we need to have? We just brought out a town enforcement officer, right, who had some land use background. We all have individual needs, but it's three different cities, three different counties, all along the same corridor. Um, we were in line with competing issues because we're so far apart, but yet we all have similar needs. And I think that's what we really look at is there's just strength in arms. And so, yeah, I mean, some of our top priorities might differ, but the answer is that being honest, listening to the audience, having those, yes, we can work together. You can have one plant. You can have, um, you know, one set of brands and, and you, you can have, uh, you know, a system that instead of replicating it, you know, three different times, you do it once for the city. And, and so that's what we're asking is, is a start. We've already been successful through the, the, you know, first grant process, um, the LCD that Michelle talked about. And then, but, you know, it goes for our council tomorrow night. And so these two will be here and will be, uh, with John Day about an hour, uh, doing the same, same speech again. But, you know, we're, we're, we're happy, we're excited about the opportunity. We've got, we've got a great town manager. She's out of the box. Uh, I think, you know, we, you just think about, he can only do more than, than one day at a time and, uh, we, we all do it. We do that anyway. We're a billion hats. We have a lot of needs and so we'll, we'll try to turn it, turn it back over.
Thanks, Dan. So Mr. McGowan, uh, my number one top priority is water. It's, I talk about it every day. We attack it every day. I have at least two to three different irons in the fire to get the water treatment out of the ground. That is my number one goal. I believe that I can work effectively with multiple projects. Um, and that I could do, and that nothing will get, I'm, I'm sure it's gonna be crazy busy, but I have the capability to do multiple projects without having something get lost. And I've got strong partners to lean into. I've got a great counsel that I can lean into. And I, and I can also come to, to the community and say, I, you know, here's what we got going on. I, I don't want this to not be a community-involved huge, you know, we've got a huge project coming on, online. And I've been talking to, um, Atkins Engineering out of Klammer Falls. And the project is so big that they will have to subcontract because they cannot handle it. So I'm looking for the best of the best to come and do that project. And I want them to bring the team. I want, I'm, we are gonna get the manpower to do that. We have the money to do it. Is it gonna take some time? It will. But every day I move that forward. I do it forward to the finish line. Every day I work on that. And I also work on the housing. And I also work on what, what the council has had me do as far as our, our strategic planning that we did in January. Every day I move the ball forward on that. Um, and, uh, John Day's staff. We have, Lakeview has the largest staff. And John Day has, um, I think John Day and Burns has less staff than us and they're getting twice as much done. So, is there gonna be a learning curve? Yes. Will there be cause for some question marks or maybe even concerns from the public? Sure. But it will be fine. I will do my very best to make sure that answers come, communication is there. Everything that you need to know about 3D printing, about MOU, about the splash pad, about the housing, about the water treatment is all online. Our entire budget is online. Everything that you need to know about the town is up online and you can go find it. And I've got campaigns coming out. I've got, uh, marketing. I've got door knockers. I've got information coming to go to the community to say, this is where we're at. This is, here's our timeline. This is what we've accomplished. This is what we have left to do. This is kind of our, our, our target for the water to get done. This is our target for what's happening with housing. This is our target for the splash pad. This is our target for the greenhouse. And it's layered. So, you know, our water treatment is first. That's where the money is coming first. Well, the splash pad's there. That's just cute. But our, the water treatment facility money is first and foremost. It's coming. It's big. It is gonna take all of Public Works, plus more, plus help from John Day and potentially Burns to get this off the ground. It's big. And then underneath that, I've got another big opportunity that I can handle. And then after that, I don't see the greenhouse coming out of the ground until probably the end of twenty twenty-two. So I work from yard charts. I have timelines. I go over them with my staff every week. We move the ball. We move what's going. We, I sign out, everybody's got an assignment. I have mine. And I communicate to the council every week. So, is it gonna require a lot of hours from, from everybody? Probably. But we have to get good water. It has been ten years too long.
Twenty-five.
Okay.
So I ran for town council for one reason. You can ask Scott about that.
You gotta go, Nick. You can go. Okay, go go. Go pet up.
I ran for town council for one reason. You can ask Scott that it was clean water. I was gonna be there on Brockovich. They told me that before we started. So, yeah, it is a long drawn out affair. Would I like it next week? Yeah, man, I'd like it next week. I'm tired of my wife telling me about the, the T-shirts and showing me. I brought them in here. Okay, so, yeah. And, and when Michelle's talking about the greenhouse, I'm thinking, why do we need a greenhouse? But the more you think about it, they're selling it the safe way. They're selling it all kinds of produce and making money on it, okay? Why do we wanna build a house? You build a house, um, it helps Lakeview with, with taxes. How mu- how much, what's a tax on a house?
Right, around six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
For a three hundred fifty thousand dollar home is around six hundred dollars.
It's what the council is.
Yeah.
The county.
So you will make, we'll, we'll get back a lot of money off low income housing.
These are meant to be three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
No, no, no. It's an example. Sorry, sorry. I didn't mean to send you to the side of here.
So, I mean, if, if you get a chance, Mike, why don't you do, do your 3D houses?
I, I know about the 3D houses.
Okay, so you have to do that, yes.
Sorry, it's all on. We're keeping it into the work of our staff so that, and then to your life. It's a combination of broadband. It, it's almost like you can't, it's a circular conversation. You can't have housing without clean water. You can't have new housing with clean water without broadband. You can't have, and it goes around and around and around and around in a circle for thirty years.
See, they had, twenty-five years ago, they had enough money to do this clean water, didn't they? And they didn't do it. So there's been twenty-five years of town councils that have done nothing. At least we're.
We have the money.
We're, we're, yeah, we're, we're.
All good. I have no problem with any of these plans. I think they're visionary and I think the Tri-City approach is great. I have no problem. I only worry about capacity and priority.
And I worry about that too. I do.
And as you were talking, I, I was thinking that if, if we did build a new home, we could put a two thousand dollar filtration system in it. So at least that house would have, you know.
And you should do it.
Yeah, I mean, there, there would be that option. I mean, there's those kinda options, I think, that on, on every house we put in, you know.
Yeah.
We're kind of. Hi, my name is Sonya Matthews. I have a question about follow-up on what these guys were talking about. Getting them just a little bit lower. The water treatment, getting it, getting the fifteen million spent to do the town's new pipes. Scott came back and said, but it'll be homeowners' problems from their houses to the lines. But ultimately, that's gonna come back on the city when it's, renters, trailer parks, everything else that are. That are, I mean, what is the percentage of these pipes and just exactly who's gonna benefit and who's not? And then it'll come down to an urban development situation where the, the lowest income, the down and out, the whoever, are the ones that are not going to have updated pipes.
And, and we, to your points, Sonya, I mean, we had that problem with wood furnaces, right? And over time, the town was able to get funding and to subsidize people who had all-style furnaces that were contributing to our air pollution. And the water should be no different than that. But your point is very fair. And so if our program doesn't include a complete package to get clean water out of the town at all the houses, and I'm not talking about the town subsidizing someone's, uh, lack of repair or maintenance.
But couldn't we start the grant process?
We've gotta start something.
Because we see that as a foresight coming.
Yeah, and to answer your question, Sonya, we are looking for grants for that to help the homeowners with that issue. Because there is a lot of people that kinda can't afford to spend ten, fifteen thousand dollars after a house remodel.
And it's all done through DEQ and that is a long, long process, sometimes two years. That's how long it took to get the grant for the Woodstoves.
And, and we are looking at that. We're looking, if, if there's grant money out there where we can help the homeowner, we're definitely gonna go after it. We're definitely in the mode right now to absorb as much grant money into this town as we possibly can. And I know I spend a lot of time, Michelle spends a lot of time every day, looking for grant money for Public Works and for this issue.
And there are alternatives, like what Mike was saying about filtration systems or.
I haven't seen anything yet, but I haven't really been looking towards a filtration system. I've been looking at grants for, uh, pipe replacement homes. And I'm, I'm glad that Mike brought that up because I really have to say. We're gonna do our best to get clean water to everybody's house for various, whatever their angle is.
Well, the griping won't stop until it is.
Of course, I'm like, oh.
But I'm just saying, the problem won't conclude until it, until it's inclusive.
Right, and there's, there's no, there's no quick fix or overnight fix for this issue. I mean, it's an issue that's gone on like a few, a lot of years. And we're gonna do our best to do what we can to kind of figure the issue. And if it's, you know, finding grants to help homeowners, or whatever we need to do, that's what we're gonna try to do. We're gonna do our best to do it.
Is at some point, you guys gonna put out PSA's so people can think about re-freshing their pipes or?
As soon as, as soon as we get, uh, confirmation on when a project's gonna be funded, because we're still waiting on business order to do the contract. The governor's already signed off on everything, but we still gotta get paperwork and get funded. We'll do a PSA and part of that PSA will be what we're looking at for homeowners also. So probably right around the first year.
I think we need to move on. That's, you know, something we really need to keep on our agenda and keep working on it. I think we will as a town because, you know, people, all of us have the same problems as all of you with the water. So we wanna keep working on that, but, are you done with your?
Oh, I'm all done.
Okay, so we need to move on through the memorandum of understanding. Um, and I guess I read through this and I'm gonna just read what the, the definition of this memorandum of understanding is. Uh, commencing on the effective date, the parties will negotiate, meaning the three towns, uh, to develop a binding intergovernmental agreement under ORS one nine zero point zero one zero, which agreement will describe the terms and conditions under which the parties will collectively pursue housing and community development projects need agreement. The parties will endeavor to enter into the agreement within ninety day, within ninety days after the effective date. Notwithstanding anything contained in this memorandum, to the contrary, the agreement will be subject to each party's review and approval. So what, what we just did is leading up to, and we need to first, um, agree to this memorandum of understanding that we do wanna proceed with the intergovernmental agreement. Yes, that's what I'm talking about. So questions on the comments or comments?
I don't think. We talked about this for a long time.
We have, yes.
I like the idea of all working together because I think it's important that we can, as a group, obtain more grants and funding, you know, to improve the quality of life in all three communities. Um, so, yeah.
I guess my kind of understanding is that the council still would have the authority to disagree with any of the, um, plans or projects that are suggested, that they are not ones that we as lakes want to do. So, yes.
Who's gonna, who's gonna, I'm Jeff Marshall. I work in the town as a network director. I was curious, who's gonna be the author of the MOU?
Uh, it says, I believe in here, that it will be written by an attorney at, in John Day for everyone's approval.
Actually, all three of our cities use the same attorney, Jeremy Green.
Oh, nice.
And he's the one that it has, will be authoring all of the documentation.
That was one of the reasons I talked to Michelle about that same thing. And when she said Jeremy Green was gonna do all three cities, that kinda made sense.
Sure.
You know, he's gonna be on board to people everything.
Is there any other questions or comments from anyone here? Yes.
So, maybe this is too flimsy. I don't know. But when do you anticipate doing a release of public information about what you guys are embarking on? Because I think it's really important that our community understands as much as they can, as quickly as they can. Because it feels quick to them. You know, I'm getting a lot of questions from folks. It's not all negative at all. It's just that they don't understand and they don't, you know, they hear, there's a lot of hearsay. So, you know, the sooner you guys can put something in motion, be on the radio, get more in the newspaper, door knockers, whatever it is that you need to do, because their fear is the water is gonna go by the wayside. I hear that a lot.
So Ginger, if I may, why are they coming to you and not calling the town?
I have no idea.
It's on our website and so you're not referring them to us?
Absolutely, I am. So, you know.
I'm just trying to understand.
Well, people talk, you know, they have conversations because these are things that they're concerned about.
Which I understand, but this has also been posted on our website.
No, 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 but this stuff is not on the website.
No, you're right. It's not.
No, it is not. I asked Sheila to put it up. What, what I, what we need to do first is we need enough each of our councils to agree before we could say anything because there's still.
Right.
A chance that either Burns or John Day may say, mm, which is why I have. Which is why I haven't said anything, because I don't want to have to backtrack or set expectations, which is, could be disappointing, and I just didn't want to do that to anybody with that's on council. So immediately following this meeting, I'm attending John Day's town council, where they are going to be talking about the exact same thing. And tomorrow at twelve o'clock, I'm going to attend Burns to see what their council says. And at that time then, information will be immediately going out.
I would like to say one thing though, that, you know, I agree that it's great for to have the Tri-Cities agreement, okay? But I also think it's very important that we continue working within the town of Lakeview and all the organizations. Because we need to come together to get grants. If we're writing a posting grants, they're going to say, look, they're not even talking to each other. And it is very important that we work with everybody within the community to get what we need. And that's my hope, it has to happen that way. That's, I think.
I've been approached by Sir Optimus and, what's the other?
Rotary.
Rotary, to be a guest speaker. And I just need to get with Michelle to get my facts right, to know what to say, you know? And I think those kind of things, what we need to do is transparency to get that out.
And the newspaper, yeah, and the newspaper.
And the newspaper, but that's one of my goals, is to give a little talk to those people. I've been asked a couple times, so.
And this is the beginning of all this information coming out. The last thing we want to do, and this happens in my career a lot, where it gets talked about and it just goes away. This happened in your life, so you're waiting to get all the facts straight, making sure that John Day's on board, Burns is on board, and then it goes out.
Yeah, I've even told Michelle, first we've talked, discussed, that, you know, don't put something in the paper if it's not going to happen. I mean, you know, that turns people off more than anything, you know? So that's maybe why you haven't said a lot of that.
Well, I understand, I'm fighting an uphill battle already because of the years prior to my coming. There's skepticism, there's non-belief, there's putting the money in my pocket. I mean, I've heard everything, and it's understandable, I understand it. I've seen the massive, and I'm not kidding, massive piles. Everything I'm saying has already been said, not ten years, not twenty years, but thirty years. So I understand I'm working at an uphill battle, and I'm working at every effort to inform the community that we hit a milestone, we hit another milestone, we hit another milestone. So that at some point, maybe in 2023, there'll be some level of trust earned. Because at this point, there is no trust. And I, and I understand that, and it is, it is narrative. So, and there's nothing I can do about that except for to keep working and to keep pushing the ball forward and to keep getting information out, that's the most I can do. And then have people see the results. Otherwise, it's just more talking. Any questions on this, there's so much to think in the afternoon as well.
I don't understand what you're talking about. I don't understand what you're talking about. I don't know.
The law of understanding to create the Tri-Cities.
Well, it's just to look into it, I need to.
To, it's to go ahead with the intergovernmental agreement. To form the, it's a solution. The one question I do have is, does it say, I didn't really catch where, to get out of the agreements later on, if you decide you have to get out of it, how do you do that? Well, that of the intergovernmental, of the memorandum of understanding, or is it? Need to have.
Section five, term.
Section five, okay.
Yeah, it's.
Any party can get unilateral thirty-day service or mutual agreement, all parties.
Okay.
And of course, without approval by all three of them.
All right, okay. But this is not the final document, the final document is the intergovernmental agreement, which is, you know, we have this in front of us.
Okay.
As a, leading up to the governmental agreement. So if you want to approve this or disapprove this, if you approve it, then it gives the town the authority to go ahead and start on the governmental agreement if the other cities agree. I'm new on this stuff here, so, thank you.
Just to kind of help your question, Charlie, when the actual agreement comes down, do you guys want to go over and go to the end and step back?
Okay. And there's always an exit clause in any agreement. There's always an exit clause in any agreement, yeah, or if there isn't, there will be.
Yeah, for sure.
So, do you want to make a motion or do you want to table this for the? I would make a motion that we go forward with the memorandum of understanding with the Tri-Cities. Second?
Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor? Am I opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so secondly, or next thing, here it is. Appointment by the town council of the town councilman to serve as the town Lakeview representative for a steering committee for partnership with the community of Burns, John Day of Lakeview.
Michelle, how much time do you think that'll take?
Forever.
Per week, because I'm still working, I mean, I just, I'm.
I'm not anticipating that it's going to.
Shannon's not here.
I'm not anticipating it to come out. You're going to choose your chance.
Yes, I'll do that.
Okay, good. So is there a nomination on the floor? I'll nominate Jake Martin to be the representative. I'll submit that. Okay, all in favor?
I probably need your telephone number in my telephone.
I'll program it in. Okay.
And those other guys, I'll send them.
And the last thing on the agenda is the approval of the Tri-Cities six hundred thousand dollars. John Day brings.
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand. I got one zero two in there. Sixty thousand dollar grant between John Day, Burns, and Lakeview through DLCD, or 3D Rural Housing for Regional Equity and Recovery. That.
And it's a long way out, but I think we need to, we need to keep it on the burner, you know? The housing.
Well, this, this is a, allows us to approve the sixty thousand. It's already been awarded, sixty thousand, six hundred thousand, let me think of that one. Day sixty thousand has already been awarded, and so we need to approve this. Or this two. The sixty thousand is a draw.
It's for the drawing.
For the state of Oregon Department of Land Conservatives, Conservation and Development Agreement, which is the new package. So, I'm just, I'm turning people back. And so we've already got the company and everything, is that correct through this? And I, you know, it's been awarded, and this is for buying the four plants or the houses. Is it just for the four plants or is it for future deal loans?
It's, if we have leftover, yes. But I think that it's probably going to take the whole sixty thousand to come up with a four separate floor plants and how we can stack them and scale.
Then I would make a motion that we accept the approval of the Tri-Cities sixty thousand dollar DLCD grant number HA23172 agreement for 3D Rural Housing for Regional Equity and Recovery. Second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other questions or comments before we close the meeting? Six twenty? Thank you all for coming.